All right, everyone, we would like to welcome our public and viewing audience to the Lynchburg City School Board Work Session for August the 16th, 2022. And of course, this is the beginning of the school year 2022-23. What a wonderful day we've had, and we'll get reports on that from our superintendent as we move along. Members of the board, you have the agenda before you, it has been featured on board docs and reviewed and highlighted. What is the pleasure of the board to approve the agenda as presented tonight?
A move that we approve the agenda as presented tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Carter's made a motion, is it second to that motion?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Charles, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member Preston?
Present.
School Board Member, Mr. Charles?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you very much, we're going to stand if it's okay for our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as it relates to the school board policy discussion tonight, Dr. Edwards will make a brief comment about that.
Sure, work sessions are our time to bring policies to you for first review. And we have two types of policies, sometimes VSBA updates them and we bring them to you, or sometimes they're just up for a three-year, put our eyes back on it. And what we have is the student rep policy, and since our student reps will be joining us next month, it's a good time to look at this one. And you're probably wondering, like, we've done this policy a couple times, we've talked about it a couple times, but we haven't put revisions, any revisions on it. So what you have before you is the original student rep policy that was last revised in 2019. But because we had a three-year review, we need to at least look at it and put it up for discussion.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, if it in fact pleases the board, we have had conversation, Dr. Brennan and his vice chair, that over the next 90 days, we might want to look at this and work maybe with committee of administration, building principals, et cetera, to see what updates we might want to make in light of previous discussions. The selections have already been made based upon how this policy stands. And so our selections for this year will be in compliance with BBBB as it is written. But we're thinking if we could take a deeper dive in this and get it to a place where the whole board could agree, if in fact we want to make any changes to some of the things, some of our new board members may not be as aware. But what is the pleasure of the board on that, that obviously we keep this as it is for now? But the suggestion is that we take another look at it and bring it back in about 90 days or less, Dr. Brennan?
Mr. Chairman, I can just add, particularly for the new board members, you know, with Dr. Carter's input over the last couple of years, there's been initiative to try to have the board representative have a little more substance to it. So there's been, one of the instructors at EC Glass, one of the teachers, Mr. Aaron Reed, who's been willing to sort of work with them to help with their presentations, help with the information they have. We're, the last couple of years, we've had an orientation meeting with them prior to the board starting. So some things like that that we would like to do to sort of give a little bit more meat on the bone to this, so that the student representative position had a little bit more substance, had a little more responsibility. So that's what we're talking about, and we'd like to bring it back to the board at a later point, once some of those things have come to be. But at this point, I want to let you know what the current policy is, which we'll follow, we'll come back later with some more information, maybe some more suggestions.
Any thoughts on that? Our student reps are awesome, and over the years, it's just wonderful to see the unique skill sets they bring to the table to gain our attention and help us to be more effective in policy and board governance. And so I think that's a good idea, and if there are no other thoughts on it, we will, Dr. Carter, please.
Well, I think that the student representatives that we have had, that each one brought a different perspective.
Right.
Manashaw, he did more of, he picked up different things that were happening at Heritage and brought those in and talked about different programs they had, and others, just not him. They brought in different perspectives, Stephen did some different things. So what committee are we looking at that's going to look at this to do more? I don't want it to be forced to be something so difficult that if they're not comfortable doing that, then they won't. Or to make it like a person that, or like a political thing, or a, I just want them to present how they feel they need to present each school. And sometimes they talk more about sports, or sometimes they talk about a topic, but I don't want it to be forced.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Carter. And the aim in this would not be what Dr. Carter is stating, because we don't want it to be that way. But again, I think if we can bring this back at some point, there, some school boards in Virginia, to this date, do not have student reps. And so we have them, and student reps can get involved in a lot of things, there are VSBA opportunities, there are ways to include them in advocacy. There even been some discussion about incentivizing those individuals who serve. And so this will just give us an opportunity to look at it short of it becoming what Dr. Carter said, because we don't want that at all. And it's to, can you imagine the wonder it is to be a student rep? In fact, Dr. Water, did you not serve as a student rep?
Oh, it's a full circle.
And we just want to bring, we want to make sure we're bringing the very best out of, and that they are really helping us as we seek to make tough decisions around the table, Dr. Day?
I was going to suggest that maybe a way to do this is not do it quite so soon as 90 days, but do it more toward the end of the year, and get the student reps who served this year involved. After they've done it for a year, they may have some perspective on how they think this policy might be improved. So maybe it'd be better to do it in the spring.
Yeah, and give them some time, just want to make it clear, the building principals are going to move forward, selecting individuals based upon what the policy says. And so let's take all of that under advisement, and we'll bring something back relative to this policy.
So does that mean that Mr. Reed is going to work with the current student reps, or does that mean that's on hold also?
You said the reps have already been appointed.
Yeah, they have, but I think Mr. Reed was going to offer some suggestions on how we could. Dr. Edwards, can you recall?
I think what he did was very informal last year, just in presentation style and things that they can include. You all have seen where the reps have actually gone back and sort of, we surveyed people, we asked them, our classmates, how they felt about or what they felt about, so some of that, clearly it's easier at Glass, because he's right there. He doesn't necessarily have direct access to the Heritage student, but that can be made possible via Zoom. It's just a matter of finding time and what is the direction that, and the level of involvement that the board wants.
Because it, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go, you have the floor, Ms. Preston.
I was just going to say, because my experience from teaching students, both writing and some oral skills, is that once you provide them with the framework for doing it, then while you might give both of us the same instructions, the product is going to be different, because you're talking to two different people. So if you say, we want you to write about the most important thing that happened at your school, from my perspective, it's going to be A. From his perspective, it's going to be B. So if somebody works with these students at the onset, just to let them know, these are the expectations, because clearly the students that you've selected are students that are reasonably good students anyway. So once we provide that information to them, then they're going to be able to do that. So it wouldn't have to be on a continual basis that they're working with somebody, but just a, you know, kind of an orientation, if you will, just to get the feel for what needs to take place.
One of the key words you said, well, two key words, framework, expectations, and I think that's the spirit of what we're doing. And we'll look at this and bring something back, whatever Mr. Reed's position may or may not be in this, and then we can go from there. At the end of the day, we do want to settle on this, because we have been discussing it for at least three or four years, and we do need to go ahead and resolve that. All right, thank you all for allowing us to have that discussion on the matter, and we'll come back accordingly. And all comments have been taken under advisement, thank you very much. We'll now go to Section D with our agenda items, already demonstrating how much we care about our students and their involvement. We have Items One and Two pertaining to religious exemption, Dr. Edwards.
Sure, by code, the board has to approve any students who are exempt from school due to religious exemption. Typically, we have these on our regular school board agenda, but since school started today, we probably want to make sure that we count these students as being exempt, and I do believe you may have two.
Yes, we do.
And the information is shared, the executive, the personal information is shared, so yeah.
All right, we can either do these separately, or we could do them together.
Might as well do them together, I would suggest.
So is there a motion to approve the religious exemption for D1 and D2?
I so move. I second.
All right, been moved by Dr. Day, seconded by Mr. Charles, and further questions or discussion on this motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Ms. Preston?
Approved.
School Board Member, Mr. Charles?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
All right, thank you very much. All right, each of you received information from our attorney and additional support information to the same, from the chair and the vice chair. And our contract for the superintendent has an addendum, which is specified in the contract. And as we have provided administrative increase, that would apply to the superintendent as well. And so we simply need to approve a motion for the contract addendum, which would add to the superintendent's contract amount, the increase that has been received by other administrators as her contract specifies, and this will be retroactive to July 1st.
A move that we...
The motion is to approve the superintendent contract addendum.
A move that we approve the superintendent's contract addendum.
I would second that.
All right, it's been moved by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Brennan. Any further questions or discussion on this motion? All right, hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member Preston?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Charles?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, board, and now moves to D4, which is our human resource report, Dr. Edwards.
Absolutely, and again, we typically try not to do too much business at a work session, but this is good business. If you've looked at the human resource report, you will see that we were able to get several teachers to join us, math teachers, special ed teachers, other teachers, which is a great thing. So we would like to have that report for approval tonight.
All right. Is it appropriate to ask questions about specific individuals on here? Just to inform myself?
Typically, we do not.
Okay, that's why I'm asking first.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But if you, let me email me.
Yeah.
Dr. Carter?
Yes, my question is, I know that everyone is struggling trying to retain teachers and hire teachers. So what are we holding teachers to, and staff or professionals to their contracts? They signed them and said they were going to stay, and now they, we're just starting this year, I mean, just starting the school year, already want to get out of that contract, are we holding them to that contract?
Yeah, and we can talk about that when we do the update on staffing, because we'll talk about all our strategies.
Thank you, Dr. Carter, yes, Dr. Brennan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the human resource report.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan, is it seconded? Seconded by Mr. Andrews. Any further questions or discussion on us approving the human resource report? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member Preston? School Board Member, Mr. Charles?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
All right, thank you. Any further comments on that, we receive all of those persons, and so glad to have them. All right, number five, update on staffing, and here, Dr. Edwards will give us some good news, and further questions can be asked regarding staff.
Absolutely, so I have some very good news, and it's actually not going to be me that gives the good news, but I will go back and answer Dr. Carter's question. I am going to turn it over to Director Scott to talk a little bit and share some good news, and then we'll get to questions.
Absolutely, good afternoon, board, I'm going to be giving you some information on staffing. So we have hired, so far this school year, 116 teachers, as of last week. We have 35 vacancies, this right now. So we have majority of the vacancies in the elementary schools, because of course, you know, we do have more elementary schools than the secondary schools. So we have about 14 vacancies in the elementary schools. In the secondary schools, we have about 17, that's combining the middle schools and the high schools. We have two positions at Fort Hill, we still have two positions at Lower Regional as well. Now, how are we going to address the vacancies, is that we also have some substitutes that's going to be filling the gap with those vacancies. We also have some teachers that may be working some additional periods. Also, we have combined some classrooms and moved some teachers around based on our enrollment day last week. Let's see, we also will, we also have expanded our job board as well. So now we purchased an agreement with LinkedIn, so we're going to be posting our positions on LinkedIn and Indeed as well. So we have expanded our job board posting. And we also has, we also talked about doing a career fair as well, maybe in October, to kind of address the last, these far as our vacancies. Our hard-to-fill positions is math, science, and special education. Right now, we have about, we've done pretty good with math. We have about two math teachers that we're looking for, for science, and about 11 special education teachers that we're still looking for. I will say, in the last couple of weeks, there is a need for instructional assistance. So I'm trying my best to find instructional assistants, so I would say that is our hard-to-fill areas. Let's see, far as bus drivers, we are pretty good with our bus drivers. I think Hope wants to hire like 14 more bus drivers, just to help with like bus driver absences or anything like that.
So let me just kind of back that up a little bit, and just give a huge thank you to our staff today. And remember, we were over 200 openings, just a little bit over a month ago. And between aggressive hiring and our staff just really helping out substitutes, covering, our babies were well-received today, and they were excited to be in school, in classrooms, and the staff were excited to receive them. Also, kudos to our transportation department today. They did an excellent job of getting everybody working, I mean, even though we're down bus drivers, the transportation department, along with the drivers and the assistants, did an excellent job of picking up everybody and getting them to school. Wasn't perfect, but certainly much, much better than last year, lots more communication on behalf of the team. And I have to say, everyone from the buses, the bus drivers, secretaries, and huge love to our school counselors as well, who are busily, you know, if you had a schedule that that wasn't what you thought you wanted, they were working on it today. I was at Sandusky Middle School, we were troubleshooting schedules like that. So everybody has just done a wonderful job of making the start of school year excellent. That doesn't mean that we still don't need staff, because we still need staff, we still need you. That would help the folks who are already here holding it down. But we were in a very good position today, as we welcomed our students back to school. And hopefully, they are all home right now as we speak. So I just want to say thank you to all of the folks, and it was real, when I say it's a team effort, everybody, even yesterday, did a wonderful job of getting ready for today. Some of the other things that Ms. Scott talked about is, you all know, we receive money for class size reduction, so we're trying to keep class sizes based on what it is for the three-year average for free and reduced lunch for that particular school. So that could be anything from grades K to three, being 19, 20, 21, and 23. And at one point, we may have had some spaces where it was looking like it may go up and over. And again, trying to really honor our teachers, it's very difficult to teach an elementary class with 28, 29 students in a room. And we have 11 elementary schools throughout the division, so one of the things that we were doing was looking at, well, second grade over here looks a little full, but not so much over here. And we were calling parents, having conversations, saying, we can offer you a spot in a school that has a smaller class size, helps that teacher over there, so that class size doesn't go up. And kudos to our transportation department, because for the most part, they were getting everybody everywhere for us. And our families, I just want to say thank you to our families, because we were calling pretty all night, all day. because we were calling pretty all night, all day, and they were just so great about hearing like, oh, okay, I can go here, I can go to TC Miller, I can go to Desi. And they were just so wonderful to work with. And many of them, you know, we called at like three-thirty yesterday, at four-thirty, they're sitting in the school with the school secretary going, I got everything together, I'm ready for tomorrow. So when I say it was a team effort to get to today, it was a team effort to get to today with everybody. And just lastly, I want to thank everybody, men to school, who showed up. It's nothing like a party, y'all. Just greeting our kids and everything. We had folks everywhere at the high school, at the elementary schools. It is just so nice when the community comes together to welcome our students back. I mean, it was nice to see parents, it was nice to see toddlers just clapping and welcoming their little siblings, even though it's not their turn yet. We had the Sheriff's Department, Police Department, city officials, everyone that was here to welcome.
General Assembly.
General, yes, it was, everybody that was here to welcome our kiddos back. So we're grateful for that. The other thing that Ms. Scott mentioned is, again, kudos to our staff. We were really looking at the numbers, and in some cases where, in a previous year, a building may have had four teachers at a grade level, and now we were counting, 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 and we're like, you could probably make do with three teachers at a grade level. And that's always hard, like, ooh, and we're going to take that teacher and not even keep them at your school, but send them to another school. And again, complete cooperation from our staff to say, we understand what the needs are throughout the division, and we're going to do our part to help. So to the teachers that transfer to another building, that's not easy, that's brave right there, but you are making a difference in a kid's life. So thank you for everybody who was like, I'll do it, I got it, don't worry about it, we're going to take care of our babies. So those are some of the strategies that we have been using to kind of monitor class size and make sure that our babies are covered. Other things, we offered incentives to staff members, particularly in some of the secondary levels where the staffing was tougher, like math. We have staff that are willing to give up their prep period, be paid for it, to teach an extra section. And before we even started school, we had staff members who said, listen, I can do that. I know we're short math, or we're short here, and I'm willing to do that. So we've had several staff that took us up on that and are helping out that way. That's not ideal, because we really do want all of our teachers to have a planning period. So we are not going to stop the aggressive look for staff members in hiring. But it does show that Lynchburg City cares about their kids and that they stepped up to the plate, and we're real excited for the school year. And I don't know if I missed anything, Dr. Wodoka or anyone.
All right, the chair recognizes Dr. Gupta.
Ms. Scott, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for hard work. So you have ten new employees, teachers coming in, I heard the number thirty-five. So thirty-five excludes this, right? This, you include that, so this is the net after this approval from the board today.
Yes.
And my second thing was, do we give, I know we give, do we give any signing bonuses? When I drive on four-sixty, there are a lot of jails, and they're all offering signing bonuses. The school systems have a sign-in bonus thing.
Yes, we did offer sign-on bonuses. Our funds is limited, because you know, it's CARES-funded, but we did offer sign-on bonuses. It was a thousand dollars to teachers, and like Dr. Edwards said, the math and science, so yes.
And I have a request for the superintendent, I know you're presenting during the retreat. I'd like to see a day-down retention from zero to two, zero to four, you know. In that first five years at LCS, what happens to teachers, custodians, you know, bus drivers? What is the retention? Because it takes a lot of time and effort to bring them in. So are we losing in the front end, or are we losing in the tail end, or the middle?
And we will be implementing this year thirty, sixty, ninety, just to check in with our new hires as well, so we can, you know, just stay in the loop on what's going on, making sure anything that they like happen, or any, they need more training, we, you know, we already addressing that in the beginning versus at the end.
I'm assuming we have sort of a mentoring program for this brand-new.
Yeah, we have mentors, they have mentors as well, yes.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Gupta. I'm containing myself in this seat, because I'm just so proud. And I guess people will expect me to say these kind of things. But this board is not playing, some people are playing, but this board is not playing, this administration is not playing. We are serious, and I remember this time last year, Dr. Sinha, how we spent almost ninety minutes trying to talk about transportation, and we talked about it at the next meeting. That's when we were having five-hour meetings, Dr. Brennan.
I remember them well.
And Dr. Edwards was working, I mean, she worked from the rising of the sun to the setting of the same, different people, and now look at where we are this year, because of this board doing its job, to an administration that was already doing their job. And now we're one year later at this good place. And so I think that the administration and staff need a thunderous round, and we do also, that we're getting this work done, and we're getting it done in an amazing way. If I have to clap by myself, I'll do it. Dr. Carter has a question on the floor, I believe, or you wanted to know something about contract honoring and so forth.
Yes, and I also want to say what a difference it makes to have a director of transportation in place. It makes a huge difference, and just I heard so many wonderful things about Hope Custer from some of the staff that work in that, in the transportation building. So that's, kudos for that, too. Now, did I hear the answer that we are holding people to the contracts, the teacher staff?
So certificated staff.
What's a certificated staff versus?
You have to have a license to do, yeah, you're a professional.
Like a teacher.
A teacher, a school counselor, a principal. Those are your professional certificated staff. So after June fifteenth, I can hold them to their contracts. And what we've said is, we're going to hold you till we get a replacement, and the replacement is available. Now, that has some teeth to it, but if someone leaves, then we would have to take different options to do that. And most people have been great about following that. We started that actually two years ago, two years ago, we started saying it, and we started enforcing it last year, and we really pushed it, pushed back and said, we are going to hold you to your contract if you sign with Lynchburg City Schools. And you all were so gracious to give a bonus at the end of last year, to kind of, you know, keep everybody here, so we've been doing that. Now, for the classified staff, it's still, they have two weeks' notice. So as much as we'd like to keep our talented classified staff, there's a two-week notice. There is intervention, though, whenever, anytime someone is thinking about leaving or whatever, we do funnel them down to HR to have a conversation, so we can figure out, what is the reason behind this? And is there something that we can do that might intervene to keep you here? And that has been successful on several occasions. We've been able to keep folks who are like, I'm just, this is, I need to tell you what's going on. And we're like, okay, this is what we can do in those efforts, so we are trying that as well.
Yeah, we have, we was able to keep, I think, like, these three people at Heritage High School in math that was leaving.
Any other board member, if, we wanted to put this on the work session today for any further insights. It's good news, we are focused on staffing, we have people who are taking care of that, the superintendent, director, and we just, is there anyone else that has anything they want to, Dr. Sinha?
Well, I just want to say that, this is my first experience as a parent of a student in the schools in a long, long time. And it went really well, we hit some bumps, but y'all were ready. So clearly, you know, you anticipate the issues, and you have the staffing and tools to take care of it, so it was hardly a blip. And so I was really, really pleased with that. On the staffing issue, I still have concerns of people, especially staff, who are having to cover areas that are vacant, because a person can only do that so long. And I worry about people getting burned out or just exhausted. It's a hard thing to recover from, in my experience. And so, and I hope that, like, teachers get compensated for additional duties, that staff are having some kind of compensation when they're doing additional. There was a recent departure that concerned me, that appears to be a case of having been assigned a lot of work that was way beyond the scope of their original position. So let's just keep that in mind and take care of our staff and not overwork them. Find ways to give them relief, if it's more than, I don't know how many months that they're filling in, and find something, somebody else to do it for a while, give them a break.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sinha, well said. The thirty-five vacancies that we have, the majority at the elementary level, right? But we've got people in front of those individuals at all times.
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Well, following up on Dr. Sinha's concern, so if someone does, and they, the stipend is monthly, so if, so say if a person who's covering, a staff person or teacher that's covering for someone else or they're taking up a different period, how quickly can they say, I can't do this anymore?
Pretty quickly, yeah, they volunteer to, we don't, we don't force anybody to do that.
They don't have to do it the year long.
No, we try not to have, I mean, last year, we did, when it came to math. We try not to do that, there are some staff that do that, and they love it, right? But that's few and far between. Most staff enjoy the break, the time, the prep time, to do what they need to do in the classroom. So we try not to use that as the end-all and be-all to it. And we've been talking about just looking at different models of how can we staff? And one of the things that I can say publicly, because I said it to the folks who needed to hear it, was, you know, we were exploring what we call the career switcher model. So I might be a biologist, I'm awesome, or whatever the case may be, and maybe my training and everything led me somewhere with an associate's degree, but man, do I have a lot of experience, and I love kids and I can teach, but I have an associate's degree, which stops the pipeline for, you can't even go down the teacher road, because you have to have a bachelor's to even begin the process for us to consider you to be a career switcher and give you all the teaching pieces you need to get the certificate, which is one of the challenges that we have. So one of the things that I've been saying is, that model worked for a very long time, and maybe it's time to rethink that model as a state. And look at, can we, if we changed one thing, move down the bachelor requirement to an associate's requirement with some structure and some form of residency, that a staff member could still get a job as a teacher while working towards these credentials to be an awesome teacher? So that's something that, you know, often people say, well, what can we do to help with the teacher shortage? That would help, we have a lot of wonderful instructional assistants who have been with us. They have been trained in Orton, Gillian, Wilson, and everything. And if you walked in a classroom, you'd be looking like, I'm not sure who the teacher is. They are just that good, but many of them only have an associate's degree, which sort of slows down the process unless they want to go back to school and take classes and so on and so forth, which we do offer tuition reimbursement to help, but that takes more time to do it. So as we look at this model of how we prepare our educators, what can we do as a school division, working with our state, to sort of be a training lab center for our own profession? And that's a whole different, think outside-the-box perspective of what we may be needing to do going forward.
All right, well, thank you, Dr. Edwards, on that, and we applaud all of the staff and this update. Thank you so much, Director Scott. All right, D six is Adopt a School, and I'm going to ask our vice chair to lead us in this discussion.
So this is an opportunity that the board has to tap into new board members' input. So just as a little background, in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year, the Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee, which was new then, came up with an idea of doing this program, which is called Adopt a School. And the goal was to allow school board members to get a little bit more of a view of what's going on in individual schools, and develop a relationship with individual schools. So that was our goal of that happening. And the idea was that you volunteered to do a school, you picked a school for whether it was in your district, or whether you went there, or whatever reason it was, and then you let the principal know that you were assigned, and then in whatever way they wanted to use you, they could, such as if they were going to have a family event, they'd like you to come, they'd send you an invitation. If they were going to have a PTO meeting, and they'd like you to come, they'd send you an invitation. If you heard there was something going at that school, you would go and sort of be a representative of the board. So it's very informal, very flexible. Again, it occurred in two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty, then COVID came along and kind of took the legs out from under it. So we're trying to resurrect it. And question number one is, we'd like to present to the board, including new board members, is, do you think this is a good idea? Any suggestions how you think it should work? You know, do we want to go ahead with this and do it again, or try it again? It's not a tradition, it's not any bylaws, we don't have to, we just thought it was a good idea. And so we'd like to start with that and open it up to the floor, Mr. Chair, if that's okay for discussion.
Yes, let's have a brief discussion on this, and we thank our clerk for giving us the visual we have here, the chart, that kind of helps us to appreciate where persons have served in the past, and maybe some have already suggested where they would be interested in. And so would you like to continue this program, Dr. Gupta?
So I said it before, too, you know, we served all the schools.
Sure.
So I don't, personally, I don't want to create a territorial boundaries where it says, this is your property, like I was going to sell you my school and buy your school. So every school should be open and welcoming to every school board member, irrespective of their district, and respective of their Adopt a School status. And that was my concern last time when we brought this up, was it creates those artificial boundaries of possession. That this is my school, and if I got to go there, then I need to ask Dr. Day, that, you know, you own Hall Dunbar, and I'm going to visit them tomorrow. So, but what is the value driven from assigning a school board member? Because you've got superintendent who communicates with the principal. So technically, we are not communicating with the principal, we are employee superintendent. So what is the value derived for this board for having this Adopt a School policy?
Look back up one step, which is just so we're all clear on this, and I think, I think we all are, but, you know, sort of by our norms and protocols, we don't represent any individual school, even from our district, right? We represent all schools, and all schools are open to us and continue to be open to us. This is by no means trying to say that this school belongs to a certain school board member. We're all welcome, and Dr. Gupta, you know, pre-COVID, you were nice enough to do a program for the staff at Heritage High School.
Oh, yes, indeed.
You invited other board members to come. So I think, just to clarify, this is something that we hope will supplement what people are doing. So anytime someone wants to go, anytime, they're welcome to coordinate that with the superintendent, with the principal. The goal is that, in the past, school board members, we have not gone to individual schools. It's kind of gone the other way, that most people have not taken the opportunity to do that. And this is kind of an encouragement to say, you know, here's a school that, you know, you are able to, if you want to. I think what happened when we actually put it in place was that there really was not a lot of activity. It was a new program, and then COVID came along, but I don't think anyone felt it was an overwhelming responsibility.
So I'm glad you brought up that heritage thing, because that's where I found, because Dr. Nillis owned Heritage, I mean, that was the Adopt a School for him. So to arrange that breakfast bagels, as a curtsy, I had to go to him and the other third district member at that time, and say, look, I'm doing it in this district. Could you guys, is that okay? And number two, then going to Dr. Edwards, you see what I'm saying? It creates an additional, personally, to me, like, a curtsy call to the board members, say, guess what, I'm going to your school, is that appropriate? So as you said appropriately and correctly, that we are open to any school and every school. And technically, and by bylaws, the principal communicate not to us, to the superintendent, and superintendent, we tell the superintendent if you find anything wrong, you see what I'm saying? So I hope it does not creating a bypass channel for people to grieve directly to the board.
If I might add, because this is a good, good timed conversation, then we'll move on. One of the things that happens when you've been on the board as long as Thomas Jefferson has not been on the earth, you remember a lot of things. Sometimes, and I'm being transparent, Dr. Edwards, to the degree that I am, this predates you. But there were activities at some of the little schools. I remember little kiddie prom, one thing that come to my mind, and no board member attended. And, and no board member attended those activities. And the school felt mighty bad about it. Now, this isn't an indictment to previous board members, I'm not doing any of that, because that's not the point. And we were getting a lot of that. So, the spirit of this, to my recall, was let's make sure that each board member would have a school that they would be vested in. And make sure that everybody knows A, B, and C that is going on at that school. And invite persons, and just make sure that that school receives some care. That's what I thought the adopt a piece was, to enhance our presence. Because it's very difficult for any one board member to go to everything that is going on in eleven elementary schools, three middle schools, two high schools, and our alternative options that we have. So this was kind of making sure that people didn't feel that way. And I thought that it was having some positive impact. And that's why we were bringing it back for discussion today. Dr. Day?
So, I would just like to ask, how many years did this program run before it was interrupted by COVID?
So as I said, we did in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Two years.
Well, no, you know, was it, that was one academic year, and in March, the school shut down. So for, yeah, less than an academic year.
So I, what I would like to hear from those board members who participated in, in it in two thousand nineteen, how it went?
All right, Dr. Carter?
Experiences of people having.
You want to follow up on that, Dr. Carter?
And following what Dr. Coleman said, I always thought it was more to be supportive of the students and for the activities of the school. Because, as he said, some schools have a lot of people, board members come, and also community members and some don't. So this just share the wealth and make sure that, at any activity, there, there was some board member that was present and that you were invested into that. And what, I think we did it more than one year, though, before COVID.
Yeah, we had it in place, I'm not sure, you know, again.
Because I remember like two or three years. And the other thing is, I know I won a, the donor chores award. And I was able to help some schools that were in my district. And also that were, that all, that I was a adopt a school, and also some other schools too, that I was able to do that. But it's just ways that you can just say, you know, "We care about you, we're thinking about you." You can help in a lot of ways. And I never felt like I owned this school, or I had to contact anybody. If I wanted to help, I would. But now, I don't go in like, as a E, I call it EPS, like an educational protective service. Try to find out what's going on, who's doing that. I don't do that. I just go in to say hi, to let people know that I'm here, that I'm, that if you need anybody to like volunteer a day or something, just let me know and how we can support, support you. And that's what I see it as. And I thought it worked pretty well. And I don't know that, probably the principal's probably said she, I wasn't good, but.
Any, any other board member would like to respond to Dr. Day's, how did you feel about your participation, whomever that may be?
I obviously can't contribute to that, because I wasn't on the board. But one thought that occurs to me is, is there a record-keeping mechanism that could be used so that, number one, we're aware of the various activities that are taking place at various schools? And number two, so that if one of us is planning to go to Easy Glass or Heritage, to the whatever it is, that the rest of us are aware of it, so that we're not double-downing necessarily. And so that if we're ignoring a particular location, then the rest of us are aware of it and will make sure we go to school number three, or whatever.
I think we have the capability to drill down to that level. And I think that we've been doing much, much better. I think, Dr. Edwards, with calendars and knowing when events are at different schools. Now, there's so much that goes on at every school that I don't know if we catch it all. But again, this was the spirit of trying to mitigate some of what you're saying, school board member Preston. And it, it has some viability to it, but we want to know if we want to continue this at this time, or otherwise, we would take it off the table. I do not want us to get back, I know we won't, to a place where anybody would feel left out or not attended to or covered by this board in the way that we can be supported. Dr. Edwards, you may feel pleased to say.
First, let me just say that all of you are welcome at all of the schools at any time. I mean, that should go without saying. I don't think any of you have ever had an experience where somebody ran from you and closed the doors. School board members coming. No, no. It's probably quite the opposite. And I, I think this, just showing up and being present and supporting kids and staff and families goes a long way. Now, we do recognize that we're over twenty-plus schools. You could get twenty-plus newsletters and be overwhelmed and not know, like, "Oh, my God, who had what on which day"? And I think one of the things that we talked about originally was kind of, well, let's narrow the pot a little bit. So if you, and I thought you was like, "We took a big school and a little school here", or something like that. So that when it was the little classroom play that you knew about, and you could certainly brag it up, because some of y'all came back and like, "This so-and-so school's doing this, you really need to come out and see. This is going to be great and wonderful". And then other people went to those events. So I think it's just a way to have all of you out there. Principals will share their newsletter dojo, whatever they're on, because they're all have a different way of communicating with the fam, but families. But it lets you be one of the family members, right? So you can get to see, like, this is what it's like when, you know, Sharon Anderson and Heritage Elementary sends out class dojo, and it's got everything in there, and, "Oh, I didn't even know we were doing this. This is great and wonderful." And yeah, Sharon, why don't you come along with me to go to those things? So I think it's more of a nice supportive gesture. And we by no means own anything. The children own all of us, right? We serve, we don't own. So, we're at their beck and call when it comes to that. And just to give you an example, this morning, all of us, we can't get to every school every morning. So what did we all do? We adopted a school. I think I had Heritage and Sandusky and a couple others. And, "Where are you going, where are you going, where are you going"? Because we understood the importance of just being present, helping out, being a smiling face. But making sure all of us didn't show up at one school, and none of us showed up at, at another school. So we just want y'all to join us. And there's so many wonderful things that go on, the opportunities to just hang out. Even if it's just, go to a middle school lunch one day and just be amazed at the fun conversations you can have with middle school kids. They will absolutely make your day.
All right, well, Dr. Edwards, that was well said. I, I think, so that we can move on, I, I do share Dr. Gupta's sentiment that all of us understand, Dr. Edwards just reiterated, that there's no ownership. In other words, you know, you don't want to make another board member feel like they can't. And I'm not saying anybody around this table has done that. It may or may not have happened in the past, but I, so thank you, Dr. Gupta, for that point. I do think that I'm hearing, at least from the conversation, that we would like to continue the adopt a school program, maybe refine it in some ways. And in order to do this, we need to do what, Dr. Gupta, I mean, excuse me, Dr. Brennan, in terms of filling in some of the places. Some of the veteran school board members, if that's not probably the best way to say that, those of us who've been here previously, may or may not want to stay with the school you had. Dr. Brennan, any closing comments on that?
Just, I would say that what you received was the list from previous years, which Tina was nice enough to dig out through previous records. But I think, speaking for myself, and I expect others, if someone wants to pick one of the schools I'm signed up for, that's fine. You know, I, I really, I'm very flexible. So I think if there are certain schools people want, you know, not a big deal. But I guess, I would like to, I think, I think, I think your sense is right. But is there a sense that we do want to continue with this? I think that's really the.
Smiling faces.
I think so.
Not even a hard conversation to have.
Right, right.
And, and again, picking back on the thing, we just want everybody to know that they matter. And so thank you for your sharing.
So I guess the way to wrap this up, if people would want to sign up for some schools, let Tina know. And then I will send out, Dr. Coleman, I will send out a letter to those schools, giving your names, giving your contact, and ask them to contact you for events that they have. And, and you can certainly reach out to them. But we'll send you copies of those letters so you know when it happens.
All right, and so, and we'll try to get this kicked off by September, yeah. All right, thank you, Dr. Brennan, for that. All right. D seven is our board retreat agenda. And it again is our desire to never force anything on anyone. As such, each of you gave comments around items that you would like to see us handle in a retreat. Obviously, there's a space and time for staff, and then there's a space and time for us to share. And either through the retreat itself or ensuing work sessions, there's a space for us to deal with just about everything. There might be a matter or two that would be better discussed with the building principal, and we will let that happen at that level. So, Dr. Edwards, would you just overview the retreat agenda for us, please?
Sure, we, we, again, as Dr. Coleman said, tried to take everything that we received from your list and the things that we wanted to present. You'll see that we have staff who are going to join us and do some presentations. And the other thing that we did is, you know, having done a couple workshops where each section is forty-five minutes, we have learned that that can be a teaser and get you going. So we tried to tie these meaningful topics to, and then we're going to come back later and. So on the work session agenda, you see the comeback later and piece to continue the conversation. Or see, okay, give us an update, where, where have we been? In the case of, and I'll just use the first one, student services supports and behavioral supports and mental health supports. You all know we were training staff. So when we come back in May, which is typically when we do our behavioral support report out, what has happened? What can we share? What data have we measured across that year? We can set that up for what we want to see at the retreat and then continually measure that. So we tried our best to do as much information as we could in a very tight schedule, while also leaving time for the board to work on school board operations and committees and things like that. So while this is the agenda, especially when you look at the work session, things can be moved around as needed. But we did want to put some targeted hard dates in there. Particularly when you look at March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, I'm just going to call it right there on staffing. So that's when we will have a better sense of where are we? And then what do we need to do to be ready for the next school year? So that's a great time to just take a pause there and then talk about some of our recruitment and retention plans that we have in place. So that's pretty much an overview.
All right, Chair recognizes Dr. Carter, then Dr. Gupta.
Well, my first question is, does it start at eight o'clock or seven forty-five?
Well, see, you're with a teacher, so when I say it starts at eight, I'm ready to work at eight. So I, we will open the door, well, Tina and I will be there probably about seven. The doors will open at seven forty-five for folks who like to come in and get situated. But because we had so many meaningful topics, we needed every minute. So we are going to start right on time at eight.
Okay.
So, yeah, so, and, and, and we're going to have some goodies for us at the beginning, yeah, and all of that. Go ahead, Dr. Carter.
I would say it's an ambitious meeting, and I see that one break. And then a working lunch. But I was happy to see the gifted education in middle schools. And I really love the way you tied this into our work sessions. So that's great. So because there were, sometimes we do have follow-ups, so this will be great, we can get additional information.
All right, and, go right ahead, Dr. Gupta.
Dr. Edwards, I'm assuming the salary benefit gap review is about that averages compared to local counties, right?
Yes, so.
Median and mean, both or just mean? You know, we, we, we always talk about we are four thousand behind, three thousand behind, that's the gap review?
Sure, and I think we're going to look at different times in your career, and maybe also different, in addition to counties, also maybe some of the cities as well, that are around the state.
Because one of my questions to the board clerk, when she asked for what items, I thought, I wanted to see what will we be doing in future to reduce that gap between local counties? And so, I'm assuming, what was the process used for designing this agenda? Was those board?
Yes, yes, sir. We took those suggestions, and, and that may well be the language that you presented, Dr. Gupta. We took what was given and kind of placed it in this very ambitious but doable retreat agenda.
So, one of the things that we do do, Dr. Gupta, and I actually just uploaded it again, is we participate in VSBAs. They say, "Give us all your salaries, and if you give us all of yours, everybody will get the, the compilation of that." So that's one thing that we use. I will say, when we did the salary proposals, when you all had your binders at the beginning of last budget season, we had the local counties, what they offered, and a couple, a few others that were close to us. And that's what we used when we condensed and collapsed and made changes in our pay tables for classified staff. It is also what we looked at when we looked at the administrative pay table. But at that point, we looked at this as a two or three-year process. So the first year was to work on classified staff and kind of bring them up. And remember, we're trying to get to the fifteen dollars an hour or more, which, by the way, we are over thirteen dollars as the minimum right now, which is a long way from nine dollars when I started. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's slow improvement, but it, but it's going up. This year's goal is to look at, in addition to classified part two, because there was a part two, to look at the administrative pay tables. Because one of the things that we notice when we compare our administrators to others is that in some cases, with our directors and supervisors and principals and APs, we're not competitive in that area there either. And then there's this hidden area that we dug up, and it's hourly rates and stipends and all of the other little things, like coaches. And we have not looked at coaches' salaries. I have not looked at coaches' salaries since I've been here, and this is my fifth year. So that's another thing that's on our, our radar in terms of benchmarking that.
You're looking at the district, what I was asking for was in harmony, because when we talk about retention and loss, whether district, one of the key things I heard over the last two years, especially last year, was our salaries are four, I'm just picking a random number, four thousand below Bedford or Amherst. So that's what I was looking for, what is our next step? Are, when are we going to catch up in that gap? So we don't hear any more excuse from those people that, "Guess what, I'm walking away, because that district is", you know, sort of strategic planning, financial strategic planning in that direction. Not actually assigning dollars, but just strategically planning, so that, that's the gap analysis.
Dr. Edwards, so I think what Dr. Gupta is asking is here, because there's going to be the next steps, correct?
And, and Dr. Waterco has, he's ready.
Great, because I don't want us to ture it too long on this. But we want to make sure that you're okay with the agenda. I think what Dr. Gupta is hoping will happen is going to happen. Anybody else with anything on the agenda? Because we are out of here with that meeting, Sarah is coming, and this is what it's going to be. I do want to also say that we're not necessarily tied to the time allocations in the sense that if we need that time, obviously, we're going to do it. But if not, we may be able to finish earlier. For example, when you get to eleven forty-five to twelve-thirty with the superintendent evaluation, that would be a relatively brief discussion around making sure that we are clear on those additional performance indicators that we determine, and just understanding the general process of that over against any specifics. And so, having said that, is there anything else that anyone wants, I mean, about the agenda? All right, well, thank you, Dr. Edwards, and you're hopefully the expertise of pulling this together, incorporating the thoughts of the entire board. All right, this now moves us to Section E, informational items. And so we're going to be eight AM. I want everybody to be clear on where we're going. And the only reason why I say that, I got University of Lynchburg on my mind. That's where my famous dots and things are. We're going to have dots and all of that. I love those things. Yeah, so, we're not going there. Then we were over at the bus station one year, and then we were here. And so when it's time to get up that early in the morning, some of us may have several locations on our mind. I want us to be clear on where we're going. So, Dr. Edwards, I want somebody to say that so that it gets in everybody's mind.
The ITC building, three five five zero Young Place, put it in your phone.
That's where we're going. Dr. Gupta.
Doing a live streaming for people who cannot come, or is it just in person if somebody?
Um, we were set up for in-person, but if we needed to do something different, we can try to accommodate that.
All right, so I'm happy about that, so we know where we're going. All right, Tuesday, August the thirtieth, at three thirty PM, the Finance and Facilities Committee will come together, and in that meeting, will determine a chair. And thank you all last meeting for organizing that meeting. Thursday, September the first, there's going to be new member, new board member orientation, and you're all welcome to come if you'd like to sit in on that. You can see our next school board meeting on. You can see our next school board meeting on September the sixth. And we're going to be meeting with council and I ran into the city manager earlier today and I'm looking forward to a good session on the thirteenth and we'll be ready for that.
I assume that's at the council chambers, right?
Where is that going to be, Dr. Edwards, have you all determined?
It's up to council, the last one was at the Business Alliance, so I will double check with him just to make sure.
And this is at four PM?
Four P.
Yeah, it is four.
Four PM.
Yeah, it's four o'clock, because you sent me a confirmation on the time. We'll get the venue straight and everybody will be clear on that and we'll, we'll make sure we're ready for that as well, okay? And once again, we want to have a good year, but this board is serious about the work that we're seeking to do and we are thankful for that. All right, Thursday, September the fifteenth, new board member orientation will happen again. The twentieth of September is our work session. And then we're going to have our governor's training in Charlottesville on September the twenty-first. Twenty-seventh is going to be the first meeting of the Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations. They'll gather and select a chair for that and get us ready. And then new board member orientation on Thursday, September the twenty-ninth. I'm thankful for these new board member orientations because we didn't have them like this in the past and I think it will help tremendously. All right, Dr. Day, yes?
This is not one of the items that you've just summarized here, but there is a disciplinary committee meeting on September fifteenth, if I'm correct. And I just want to ask, where do those take place?
We would, if we in fact are going to have them, and I guess Dr. Brown will notify us of that.
There's one scheduled for that time if needed, I guess.
Right, that's how that works.
So where do they occur?
Right here.
Right here, okay.
All right, three members will meet right here, one of the three will be the chair. All right, very good. Now, we will now move to F one and the. Yeah, F one, notice of a closed meeting. And we will now like to entertain a motion to convene a closed meeting to discuss the following as permitted by the Virginia Code, section two point two dash three seven one one A eight, consultation with legal counsel. Is there a motion to go into closed meeting?
A move that we go into a closed meeting to discuss what's stated.
All right. All right, a move by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Brennan, that we go into the closed meeting for the stated counsel, legal counsel consultation. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School board member, Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Tros?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
School board member, Andrew?
Yes.
All right, we will now go into closed meeting, Dr. Edwards. We, it is a pleasure, the board, we moved this to the end, attorney is here, everybody's here. We can remain here if you'd like, or I think I hear here is nodding. So let's take a maybe a two or three minute break. The clerk has provided us some things over here and we'll get started in about two or three minutes with our closed meeting. Again, thank you to the public for coming, we appreciate you being here. And this has been a great first day of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we are all excited.